Clerk, please color roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
God bless you. Got it. Share my camera. Why do I want to share my camera?
Commissioner Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Present.
Commissioner Sauer?
He's muted. We got, yeah, present. You got all five? All right.
I think Sauer is muted right now.
Okay, cool. Um, all right, so we're going to recognize the month of May as Building Safety Month. And I know that city clerk has had some correspondence from some folks. I think we had a proclamation that we'll, that we have issued. So that's in place. So I don't have it here. Do you? I don't think we really need to read it.
Yeah, I really, I didn't bring it with me. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It's okay. And so the next, I guess the first item would be the consent items. So it asks the city manager to read those items, starting with number one, please. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, we did have one public comment that, uh, to be read into the record.
Absolutely. Do you have it?
The clerk has it. I think it is ready to read it.
Okay, go ahead. I'll let the clerk read that. Thank you.
Before you do, we actually had five. Blair just had emailed up to about 15 minutes ago. Do we have all five of those comments to read?
Unfortunately, we do not because only one of them related to a specific agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, this citizen's comment is from David Hacker. And it is regarding upgrades at Capital View Park. And Mr. Hacker says, I've heard much discussion concerning lighting at the two upper adult softball fields, Legends and Williams, as well as for the Sauer Soccer Complex, Sauer One and Two. But nothing has been said about adding lighting to the Bob Fannin Field. This field is utilized primarily by Frankfurt High and Frankfurt Middle softball teams. The lack of lighting at this field severely limits the amount of practice and games that can be scheduled on any given day. I'm hopeful this will be addressed in the park's master plan in a partnership with the Frankfurt Independent Schools can remedy this deficiency. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. And any of the other comments, the commission, just for the record, will, will review those when we check our emails and read those. So anybody that sent those, we'll make sure that we can add those to our files, information to review. And if that's it, then next item would be the consent items or let the city manager read those items, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one is approval of the minutes from the April 13th, 2020 special work session and the April 27, 2020 special regular meeting. Item two, request authorization to apply for the National Endowment of the Arts Cares grant funding, not to see $50,000. This is on top of the grant we already received and it will, if awarded, will assist the Frankfurt Arts Master Plan project and implementation. And there is no match required for this grant. Item three, request acceptance of the $45,977 provided by the COVID-19 burn grant supplemental funding to cover COVID-19 expenses. No matches required for these funds. Item four is request authorization to apply for $52,950 in the 2020 Kentucky 911 Services Grant to purchase and install the cash emergency medical dispatch software. An annual maintenance fee of $6,187.50 from the 911 account will be submitted as match. Item five is to request authorization to extend the existing contract for one year to allow Charles T. Mitchell to perform the City of Frankfurt yearly audit at a cost of $37,000. Item six, request approval to continue the MOU with the Legislative Research Commission to provide a first responder during legislative sessions for a fee of $47 per hour. This fee covers all wage and benefit costs associated with this position. Item seven, request approval for the mayor to sign the 2019 Phase Two MS4 Annual Report as required by our MS4 permit. Item eight, request approval to extend the existing Franklin County Humane Society contract to pay $16,250 quarterly for a total of $65,000 yearly to help with operational costs at the Humane Society. Item nine, request approval to purchase and replace one RAS pump at the wastewater plant. B.L. Anderson's bid of $46,638 was chosen after comparing prices and different options from three different companies. That's the end of the consent count.
Okay, we do need a motion on those, please.
Move to approve.
Move back Commissioner Tippett? Need a second, please.
I didn't hear the second, Mayor.
Was that Commissioner Sauer?
Um, Mayor, can we go back to the beginning?
Of the?
Well, here's where, here's where I am. I just have some questions regarding, and I apologize, I should have done this at the very beginning. I have some questions about item number nine, the RS pump and sewer and so forth. And, uh...
Commissioner, sorry to interrupt you. Let me ask Commissioner Tippett, would you withdraw your motion so we can put the consent, leave the consent calendar open and then if Commissioner Sauer wants to discuss it, we'll just take that off the consent items?
Yes, you can just have the motion withdrawn.
Okay, so Commissioner Sauer, do you want to take number nine off the consent calendar to discuss?
Yes, I do. Can we discuss it at the end of the meeting or the agenda?
Uh, we'll put it...
Maybe item number 11, maybe?
We can, we can leave it as, we can put it right back before action items. If, so if there's a motion on the consent calendar, items number one through eight?
Sue move, Mayor.
Move to approve. Move back Commissioner Wisman. Second by Commissioner, I'm not sure who that was.
Sauer.
Sauer. All right, all those members, okay. All members indicating their presence tonight will be considered to vote in affirmative on the consent items, one through eight, unless they file vote modification forms, which I don't believe we have any. So those are adopted. So now we will deal with emergency PO for RES pump. Commissioner Sauer, you had questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, very much. I, and hopefully the sewer director is online. I had some questions, you know, this particular item was $46,638. And you had another bidder that, I believe it was Anderson Clark. Let me look just a second. That gave lower bids. Yeah, it was Anderson. Wait a minute, that's not right. Hang on with me. I'm going through my pages to get the right page. We had, uh, in the bidding, uh, bid a lower price of $17,795 for a new AC motor, 40 horsepower. And maybe the director of the sewer department can explain why the other piece of equipment is better. That's the only question I really had, Mayor, is why is the other piece of equipment better?
Okay. So do you want, do you want to direct that question to our sewer director?
Yes.
Okay.
Kenny, is Kenny on?
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay, go ahead.
Great.
Hello?
Yeah, Kenny, if you could just explain, uh, your recommendation is better.
Yes, currently the pumps that we use, the pump is separate from the motor. So you have a motor up top, a driveshaft, and then the pump itself. The new mo, the new pump that we are recommending is, I think it's $46,000 for a pump and motor as one unit. To the, the one that you're talking about for Clark Electric is just to rebuild the existing motor that we have now. And then we would have to spend another $43,000 to replace the pump. So it would be up, if we did, if we went that route, it'd be around $65,000 a pump. So that's why we changed it to the new style pump that'll just drop in exactly with the, the way our setup is now, but with also about $18,000 less.
Very good, Kenny. I appreciate the explanation. When I saw those numbers, they just jumped out at me. And I didn't understand, we were only giving a half a piece of equipment. But thank you. I appreciate that. And Mayor, if it is an order, I'll move that we approve item number nine.
Okay, thank you so much. It is a, an order and a motion by Commissioner Sauer.
Second, a minute.
Second, by Commissioner Tippett? Any discussion? See none? Clerk, please color roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, thank you. And thanks to our staff for recommending the replacement with the newer style. Next item would be action item.
So I do have a question for number seven, but it's more of a, an operational thing instead of that the report was due on May 15th. Of course, we're voting on it on May 18th. Just wanted to make sure that it was not a typographical error that we don't need to alter if we are three days past the, the report deadline for the EPA Phase Two reporting for Kentucky Vision One.
That, that was the item that was going to be the only item that I was watching last week. And, and I had Katie reach back out to them and they extended that actually till June 1st. So the memo didn't get updated with the actual deadlines, which June 1st.
Thank you. I assumed that we had. Just wanted to verify.
Good, thank you. Uh, next item would be first and second reading of ordinances. We have, um, item number one is a second reading and ask the solicitor to read that by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance amending sections 91.15 and 91.16 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to Chapter 91 Streets and Sidewalks. This ordinance amends section 91.15 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to incorporate by reference the 2020 version of the right-of-way standard, delete unnecessary permits and fees, increase permit fees for street sidewalk closure, driveway, sidewalk, storage pod, dumpster, temporary parking, and general permits from $20 to $25 each, and add a $150 refundable deposit for lighted barricade rental. The ordinance further amends section 91.16 to increase the fee for damaging or excavating pavement to the pavement repair estimate plus 15% increased from 10%.
Mayor, move to approve.
Move back Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Tippett? Question? Right, see none? Clerk, please color roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
I think he's froze on us.
He's unmuted.
I'm getting a signed slow network connection. And it says turn off webcams.
You're not in your car, Commissioner.
Commissioner Sauer, we were on the ordinance we just read?
Yes. I followed most all of it, yes. Are we at the voting point? Yes.
Yes.
Waiting on your vote, Commissioner Sauer.
Yes, I vote yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, item is adopted. Next would be first reading of an ordinance, uh, relating to public property. Would ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 130.02, related to public property. This ordinance amends Section 130.02 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to allow for recovery of costs associated with repair or replacement of public roadways, features, and appurtenances from a person who deliberately, wantonly, or recklessly destroys such public property.
All right, are there any questions?
Did it require a motion, Mayor?
No.
I didn't think it did.
Okay, no questions. We'll move on. The next item would be, uh, next item, number three, be the Second Street Tiger Project Right-of-Way Acquisition Parcel 5 City of Frankfurt for the temporary and permanent easements. And we have staff available. This would be for the, uh, you and the grant of the easement. If there's any questions, we have staff available. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Should we get a, a motion in a second before we go into discussion or should we get discussion preliminarily?
Uh, motion in a second, please.
I move to approve.
Move back Commissioner Tippett? Second, by Commissioner Waldridge. All right, questions? Do you have a question, Commissioner Tippett?
Yeah, yeah, I would just, you know, if, if Chuck can just, you know, give us the short versions of summary, the synopsis, don't really want to tone me, you know, what these easements really do and what they are, just for my edification, because I'm not really up to speed on this.
Okay, Mr. Knowles?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I missed Commissioner Tippett's question due to my, my webcam going out on me or voice.
Just Chuck, please. Chuck, can you just summarize what, uh, what the intent of these easements are for, for me? Because I'm not real sure I'm up to speed on this and it's, I mean, it doesn't have to be long, just a quick summary. What, what, what this legislation is going to do for us?
Uh, the Tiger Project had eight different properties involved in right-of-way acquisition. Either fee simple purchase, uh, permanent utility easements, or a temporary construction easement. And in the case of the city, our parcel between the public safety building and the IT building across the street from City Hall, it involves a temporary construction easement to do construction work and then a permanent easement for the plant board to, uh, maintain and operate, uh, their facilities that are involved. So that's basically what's involved with this particular parcel.
So one quick follow-up question, Chuck. Um, I'm just assuming this is gonna give us some traffic flow disruption. Am I wrong in that, I hope?
I'll answer that.
Lost again.
Sorry. Yes, yes. Please, Keith, or somebody.
This, this is all part of the $12 million Tiger Project. To do the project, we'll go, we'll bid out and then we'll probably bid this out next spring. And for us to do the work, we had to get easements. And the feds consider us as somebody that, we need to get an easement for their project, even though it's our project. So this is just an easement so we can do the work there along the right-of-way for the Tiger Project. And yes, there'll be a lot of traffic issues when we tear up Second Street and replace sidewalks and such.
What?
Mayor?
Oh, you just muted yourself.
Uh, I'm sorry. Do you have a floor?
Glad you did, Commissioner.
I, I just think we need to really make sure that we, you know, we fully notify the public when we have these, uh, these traffic disruptions. I mean, I, I get calls from folks all the time about these. I know there's lots of construction going on. Uh, but man, do they, do they, uh, it, it causes them some consternation. So if we can just make sure we're really out front with this and publicize this and let the, let the public know what's going on in a, you know, in a, in more, more than timely fashion, because it's, uh, we will get some feedback, or the next commissioner will get some feedback. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor May.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wisman.
Um, I've got a couple of concerns. One is, is about the size. Nearly seven tenths of an acre on a corridor that we're hoping to revitalize redevelopment. Traditionally, in my experience, some of the plant boards easements in the city seem a large for, um, uh, the urban portions of our city compared to the, uh, the more sparse suburban areas. And, um, I wonder if that much land is really needed to provide the access that is, that is required. So I was hoping to see a, um, a plat or something, and this is one of the, the last things I've read through to ask for that in time, but, but I've, I'm hesitant for us to provide this easement, um, for that large of an area if, if there's the ability to see less land used that would then be able to be opened up for development purposes in the future. So that's just a, a comment. The second part is more of a, a legal question, maybe for Laura. We're providing an easement to the Frankfurt Plant Board, which in itself is the entity, and it gets back to this, this back and forth that we've had for several years, that the land that the plant board operates on is vested in the name of the city, correct? Is this a necessary process to provide an easement to ourselves, in a sense?
My understanding from talking with all of the Tiger representatives is that it is. We understand that some of this is very much a formality, um, to a certain extent, but it is required for this project. All elements of this are required for the project, um, which is why we're doing it. But we did discuss that. We realized it's a little bit of a, um, you know, a little odd to be giving ourselves easements or giving permission to ourselves for our own project. But yes, all of this is required.
Any other questions?
Madam Counselor, if I have a question, Jermaine, to the Tiger Grant, I guess I can ask it?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, since we, since we've got Chuck with us, go ahead.
If it's related to the right-of-way acquisition.
I knew you would do that to me.
We're being pretty strict.
I'll withdraw my question. Thank you, Counselor.
One more question, if I may. If we were to pass over this until we have a, uh, the boundary description in a map form for us to review, is there a time crunch? Or if we were to push this off into our next, uh, meeting in June, um, I would like to see the, the boundaries and how that could impact, um, the land around here, potentially, if, if we have time to wait.
Mayor?
Okay, go ahead. City Manager?
Uh, I think we need to keep this project moving. I wouldn't recommend passing over. Uh, we're on a tight schedule. Right-of-way acquisition, uh, I'd hate for us to be the holdup on right-of-way acquisition so we can move to the next phase of the project. I, I will promise, uh, I'll ask Chuck to try to get a drawing together and we'll, uh, get it to Commissioner Wisman and we'll evaluate. We can always work with the plant board to see if it can, it can be a little smaller, but we can, we'd be glad to explain it to Commissioner Wisman at a later date. But I wouldn't slow this process down. It's tied to about $8 million in federal funds.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay, go ahead.
I, I didn't ask really, and whether it was, um, a hurdle here, um, do we have time to thoroughly review this? I think we need to be very strategic in what we do on Second Street, not to hold up the process. If there's a way that we can adjust this and go back and, and alter it, I'll be fine to go ahead and approve it, but I am concerned that it's a significant piece of land as large as, um, some of our commercial buildings adjoining this, that could potentially impact the future. So I, uh, I'm cautious. And I think we should always be cautious to make sure we consider the future as, as best. If we have time to wait until, what, two weeks, I think that's no problem.
Mayor May, this is Chuck Knowles.
Go ahead.
The vast majority of that easement is temporary, which means it's going to basically be affected during construction and it'll revert back to city property. The only piece of that easement that's really going to be, uh, tied up in a utility permanent easement is, is back of that Peter piece of easement we're looking at. So the vast majority that will return to city-owned property after construction is completed.
Chuck, does that say that specifically in here? I don't see that in the MOU.
I've got, uh, I could provide a, as the city managers indicated, I can provide a kind of a plat of the, both the temporary and the permanent utilities was involved. And that'll show you that the vast majority of that is for the temporary easement.
I'd like to see that. Thank you. Same course going forward with the other, I think, eight, parcel easements and acquisitions that we're going to be reviewing very soon. Let's make sure that, that information.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the right-of-way acquisition process is a directed communication between the project and the property owners. Uh, the city's not going to see any more of these, I guess, MOUs. The only one we're going to see is the one that affects city property. The other seven involve private property owners, and I'll ask city solicitor to confirm that.
Yes, that's all right. Our, my understanding is that the reason this came to us is because it actually is our property. Um, but that being said, I'm certain that we can get whatever information that you all would like to see as the project progresses, just to make sure that you all have what you need and are able to ask the questions you need to.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Any other questions? All right. Others, and I guess clerk, please color roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
I'd like to explain my vote, yes, but I will, um, hold the contingency that I'd like to revisit this to make sure that our compliance is going to be in best interest of the community.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, that item is adopted. Thank you. Uh, next item would be the 2020 recreational trail grant application and resolution. It requires a 20% match, which would be $46,708. And this match can be made up of cash or in-kind services. So the, uh, amount that we're applying for would be $233,540. If there's any questions, staff can answer those. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move back, Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Looking back, Commissioner Waldridge, any further discussion? See none? Clerk, please color roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Next item would be, uh, Capital View Park upgrades.
Mayor is actually recognized. Uh, we all know that the bid openings for the lights for soccer field one and two for Capital View Park, uh, the bid opening is June the first. I would move that we that we, uh, do a bid award at our next meeting. We, we, we are going to, we are going to review the RFPs for over a week to get the recommendation of the select committee reviewing the bids. They are going to have that ready, certainly within a week or two. And I'm not sure exactly when our next meeting is. That's why I phrased it at our next meeting, what, whenever that is.
Currently scheduled for June the 8th, but if we need to, we can, we can have a special if, if need be. That's three weeks. Very good. We have an extra weekend there.
I need a second. Is that a motion? Was that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, second back, Commissioner Tippett. Okay, go ahead. You wanted to say something?
So we get we get these on the first. We have a panel that'll review it, and then we'll have to go through contracts. If it can be ready by the eighth, I'm all for it, but this depends on a whole lot of other people. And honestly, I think I think you are getting in the weeds a little bit on some administrative duties. I don't I'd like to hear Commissioner Sauer's reason to push this project to an RFP. It's not a bid. It's an RFP, so the proposal to be evaluated. And we had committed by the June voting meeting. I would like to hear reason why we would rush this by the June work session.
Well, one clear example is our master parks parks master plan. You know, you you evaluate them and the RFP comes up with a bid proposal as part of the RFP. It's a it's a proposal is what it is. The selection committee evaluates it. And then you you've got a week to evaluate the RFPs. And then at the earliest, it would be well, I I'll leave my I'll leave my motion the way it is at F at the next meeting is the way the motion is phrased, whether that's June the eighth or some other day.
I'd like clarification. Are you wanting the bid completed by the eighth or just the RFP consultant or the lighting consultant? Are negotiating the bid by the eighth?
Well, as you know, City Manager, the RFPs are to be opened on at two o'clock on June the first. So that RFP would have their qualifications, what they want to do with it, and also a price. And the select committee, as it was for the master plan for the parks, is going to analyze those and pick a winner from the submitted RFPs, just like we did for the master plan for parks.
Commissioner. Any other?
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Waldridge.
I guess I would like just a little bit of clarity on the push on this, given our situation of COVID and our staff, you know, trying to move things in, you know, forward and why lights right now being that we're not even allowed to have more than ten people around each other are our first priority right now to really push through. You know, I just don't want to rush anything through for something not to be done correctly or to give a lot of focus on something right now that not so much could take a backseat to things, but I just don't foresee soccer on that field anytime soon. I'm for the lights. But I just really think we're getting the cart before the horse on this. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction as far as taking care of things that are needed at this moment, given the circumstances and the sensitivity of COVID in our community versus lights that are going to sit there right now and could possibly sit there for the rest of the year non playing.
I'll be glad to respond, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner, all construction projects like lighting in this case have been exempted from COVID from day one. You that's why you see construction work on highways all over Kentucky. And I'm not deviating any from the progress we made, this commission made in doing the master parks program. They had an earlier step, I will quickly admit, of qualifications. Then they went to an RFP. We have already gone to an RFP in this case. They deliberated for about a week and then voted the select committee that was chosen to make a recommendation that we will find and follow and act on hopefully in just a few minutes. So there's no deviation from the standard, in my opinion. And construction work can can progress. As far as those select committee, I please correct me if I'm out of out of line. I think they were gone. They were Skyped as far as their analysis. There was separation of those select committee members. So there was not a problem there either.
Go ahead, City Manager.
Well, I'm a little concerned that, you know, this this is was added by the commission and repeated attempts to reach out to the commissioners to figure out why this item was added. You know, capital discussion on Capital View. And we could have talked through this. And actually, there's an email string where we've already talked through this. And we committed a lighting RFP by the voting meeting in June. If at all possible, if it can be done by the eighth, that is fine, but I don't see the need to interject a June eighth requirement that this be completed. There's a lot going on, and it's not just us. There's a review panel as well. I just you know, it seems like you all are getting in the administrative weeds a little too much here.
I'll be glad to I'll be glad to respond, Mayor, and then perhaps Commissioner Waldridge. This didn't happen yesterday. Didn't happen yesterday. Let me be clear about that. I've got documentation and every member of this commission has documentation going back to May the twenty eighth, the twenty ninth and of two thousand nineteen. So this is no new project for this commission.
I believe the funding was approved in the February voting meeting at the second reading of our budget amendment.
Does it take three months for us to act?
Well, we're in a pandemic, Commissioner, and you all have been pushing master plans and hurry up the Ford Hill and a whole lot of other different things. So no, sir, it is not. But we've got a lot going on right now. The mayor can contest. There's a there's a lot of meetings going on every day related to this pandemic. We also have a parks master plan that is kicking off, then it seems. And we've already, we've taken commission guidance to have the parks master plan look at Capital View Park first, so we can figure out what we might do with that area, which tends to lean itself towards let's see what the parks master plan says about lighting before we put poles somewhere, we're a restroom, but we're the commission has made it clear we're moving forward and we are moving forward. If you all want to require it by the eighth, go ahead. My initial comment was, seems like you all are getting in the administrative weeds pushing projects and acting like we're not doing anything else.
Um, Mayor, Mayor.
Commissioner Waldridge.
I just wanted the City Manager to clarify that though we are one commission, but y'all are not doing anything. I clearly, if I have any issues, I go to the city commissioner, you know, the city manager, I speak with him and give him my opinions, whether that's email or over a phone call. I am not in that situation right now. Our on my opinion and versus my opinion, our city commission is not working as a city commission should. And there is a lot of meetings and conversations. I have not been maybe aware of Keith, and I apologize some of my not knowing, but I am finding out about these little side conversations from other people in our community. So I do apologize on behalf of those that choose to have meetings and choose to push outside of our terms of what a city commissioner is supposed to do. All I'm saying is I thought that there were dates set for this. I don't see why there is a rush. I understand, as I said before, Sauer. I understand your dad's name right is on these fields and you have every right personally to want to get that done for a namesake as, you know, you're leaving the commission at the end of the year, at the end of this term. I understand why. Another reason you know, to your heart, you want to get this done. I want to get it done because it's for the community. It's something we need, but I also have always said that you don't want to get the cart before the horse, and I don't want to step on any toes because we do have competent staff as we see through this COVID that is really truly trying to take care of things that we need, and I don't want to push anything. Further, I thought there was a time date, and now there's another date. And so that's all I'm saying. Can we please stay on course in the direction we're going?
Any other comments?
Mayor.
Commissioner Wisman.
A few thoughts here. You know, when this body comes together, it is our purview to get into any level of detail that we want as a body. And and I don't appreciate staff telling us to step back. I mean, we are vested by the community to make the decisions as we see best. And when we come together as a five member body, we can discuss and go to any level or depth or degree we want to dictate to our staff to create things. I do agree that we have a little bit of a cart before a horse in in the situation of of the lights. But we have an opportunity at the same time that we have a lull, a lull in in staff responsibilities at the moment to some degree, as well as all of our parks are empty at the moment. So we might want to take the opportunity and I fully support Commissioner Sauer's ability to voice his concerns and his issues and his desires to the commission to discuss as a body when we meet as a five member body, five member, by the way. We could potentially see return of of low contact sports very soon, and I think it might behoove us to go ahead and fix up some of the facilities that that our community is going to be able to use immediately, that there's been great desire. We've been discussing for a year. So John, I'll I'll second your motion. I think it's no problem that we ask staff to bring us the results of an RFP within a week. But I would add that I would like the park board to be the ones that review that RFP and make a recommendation to us. I think we have removed our board that we have set aside to act in the best interest of our community as a parks entity with the most understanding from too many of the instances, and I'll bring it up again here in just a little while. But I would like that they be the ones that make that recommendation in reviewing those RFPs with the most experience and have some involvement in that process. So John, I'll I'll second your motion.
We had a second. Commissioner Tippett already seconded, but I want to be sure. Were you wanting to add that in a motion about the parks board? Or are you just saying?
I would request maybe the body that that review the RFPs. It's what they're there for, and they've been sidestepped for for months and months and months from having any involvement in anything from the master park plan process that they've not even seen yet to to other activities of the parks.
Commissioner Sauer?
Commissioner Wisman, I I think the route to go for the Parks Board is through the steering committee, which will have impact. I do not accept the idea of the Parks Board by itself making the decisions. But, you know, I think it's it's apropos to have a member, perhaps the chairman of the Parks Board on this steering committee as we go through the process.
So sorry, Commissioner Sauer, that's not what I meant for the RFP response, a review of the RFP response for the lights. I'd like for the Parks Board to have the ability to comment to us on that one specifically.
I think comments are fine.
All right.
Go go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. City Manager.
I just I just like to remind everybody that I'm part of this process and if it's okay to comment when I agree with you, but not okay to comment when I disagree with you, then we've got a problem. Please, please tell me where that's not allowed. And I'd also like to take I don't I don't appreciate the the accusation that there's a lull and things to do. The people that are in responsible charge for these RFPs, RFQs are very busy, as busy as ever. You know, they're trying to manage parks and staffs in a remote fashion and and also do a budget and while trying to develop multiple RFPs in a thirty day timeframe. Staff's doing a great job and they're working very hard, and there is no lull that I've seen with the staff in charge of this project. That's all I got.
Hey, Commissioner Tippett, did you want to be recognized?
Well, if I said a lull for some staff, I didn't say everyone. Obviously, we have quite a lot of staff that are working harder than ever to deal with issues around the community, and I I didn't interject that comment in that manner.
Commissioner Tippett, were you want do you want to be recognized?
Mayor, I I just have one small comment. I think this body, all five of us. We were elected with a mandate from this community to provide transformational projects and to spur growth and to invest in the infrastructure and to provide best possible opportunities for entertainment and high quality quality of life experiences. It is incumbent upon us, I think, to to make sure, and Mayor, you and I have talked many times about continuity of government in a in a crisis situation. And yes, we're in a crisis situation, but we we were elected to do the this job, and I I think we should pursue doing this job. Providing this community with the kind of growth and infrastructure that they have wanted for years. And they've asked us to do it. They demanded that they, as a matter of fact, we had several meetings where, you know, we were criticized roundly for having an eighteen million dollar surplus and not spending it. I I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We're there are several highly intelligent, I will include myself in this, but there are several highly intelligent people on this board. We can navigate through this. I'm sure we can. So I think it is it is right for for this board to pursue the mandate it was given when it was elected. So that's my comment.
I'm gonna go ahead. As a reminder, we do have to stay on topic, so I'm sorry. Are you all ready to vote? All right, clerk, please call. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wisman. Okay, so. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
What if what are where are we at for voting? I'm sorry.
Clerk, do you want to read? Do you have the motion?
Yeah, um, on Capital View Park Lights. Move Commissioner Sauer moved to do a bid award at the next meeting for Capital View Park Lighting.
No.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes, and I'll also explain that I may not agree with an award. I do regroup agree to review the RFPs, and if it looks like there's a something we should hold off on, I'll I'll state so at that point in time. It isn't hurt to review those. So, yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, and I do want to say thanks to the staff. I know that it is hard on our staff at this time to deal with what we're dealing with on the emergency side, but as Commissioner Tippett mentioned too, we do have two tracks going. We have the emergency side, and then we have the continuity of government side. So hopefully staff knows how much we do appreciate them. That motion passes. Next is number six, Parks Master Plan Update and Award of Contract.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor. I had one other other item, if it pleases the commission. I'd just like to hear from sewer director Kenny Hogston to give us a quick update on our application with the Department of Water regarding the sewer upgrades on item number five.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. Is Kenny around?
I'm here.
Okay, there you go. Okay, go ahead.
All the the plans have been completed and they have been submitted to Division of Water on May first for review. We're waiting on them to give us approval, and then we can put the project out to bid.
In the interim, Kenny, is there anything that we can do, anything else that we can do regarding contractors or specs or anything else that we can do in-house?
We have already contract or contacted several of our contractors that we have a very good working relationship with and told them that the RFP would be coming out and to be expecting it so that they would be prepared as soon as it comes out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Wisman?
Question in line with that. I I'm I'm a little taken back. I don't remember a discussion that we were going to put out that project to bid. I thought that sewer upgrades were going to be completed in-house. I realized we had Branstad or Carroll develop that, I think it was, that project, the scope of the project. But I thought that was still going to be completed in-house and can we have a, can we have a formal update on that? You know, I would also request that that some of these projects that have been ongoing and sort of languishing that that we ask staff to include those in our bi-weekly update or you know, we at first had some indication that we would be able to run sewer to Capital View back over the winter and we're already nearly going into summer here. So I don't need Kenny maybe to respond fully here, but maybe just a a full memorandum of the scope of that project and how it's developed. And I'd like to know a little fuller because that is a little bit of news to me that we are developing an RFP to put that project to bid.
Okay, so are you requesting? A, you said a memo?
Sure.
Okay. City Manager.
I will be glad. I'll work with Kenny. We'll get an update out to the entire commission this week. And I would also remind all commissioners that anytime you have a question about any project, we're here. All you gotta do is send a note. As the mayor knows, anytime you do a work order or system, if you do it in writing by email, we're very responsive and it's hard to believe that that idea just popped in your head now to say in an open public forum against staff. I think, I think you ought to reach out and get updates, and we'll be glad to give them to you on that project or any others, and instead of kind of implying there's a lot of languishing projects.
All right, so be clear, we'll get a memo from?
Yeah, Mayor, this is just the first that I'd heard that they were intending to put out an RFP to bid the sewer construction to Capital View. We've been discussing this for months. I thought it was only going to be in-house work, and that was the point, to save us some cost. So I'd just like a full memo. And yes, this did just come to my mind upon hearing this of the scope of the project. So I understand it more fully instead of asking questions in this format.
Question, Mayor.
Oh, who's talking about Commissioner Tippett?
Yeah, refresh my memory, guys. When did we start discussing sewer upgrades for Capital View? I really do not remember when we started that. Do you remember anybody?
I've got it. At least before December the 2nd, 2019.
Is that when there was an approved direction? Is that when, so December 2nd last year is when, you're right, that's when we talked with Kenny about a project to design and upgrade the sewer system that was failing at Capital View Park. I agree with that.
We started discussions in the fall. I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could talk for just a second.
Please.
We started discussions in the fall, and our thought process was that we would do all this in-house. And so Commissioner Wissman, I am sorry that this is just with all the COVID-19 things and our staff getting behind on a couple of things. We thought that we could put this project out to bid and get it with the kind of the rush that we want to make sure that this gets done this year. We wanted to go ahead and just say, let's see if we can bid it out and get it done. And that would take some of the stress off of our staff because they've already gotten behind on a couple of our construction projects because we've been limited staff for, you know, almost two months now. So we just thought it would be better to go ahead and try to put that out to bid. We could get the project done, and it would get sewers there quicker, especially with the possibility of turf and all the lighting projects. We didn't want to delay anything else with us being the first ones to go. I hope that helps.
Mayor, if I may. Kenny, Mr. Hogston, thank you very much. You're an outstanding employee. You save us money all the time. This was just a development that I had not heard, and that's why I'm asking for basically what you just said, but maybe a little more in-depth of what you think the project is going to entail, timeframe, cost, et cetera, for us to better evaluate. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Kenny, for that clarity.
Okay. Commissioner Sauer, did you have any further on that before we move on to the next item?
That's all. I'll follow up with Kenny.
Okay, thank you. And to be clear, we're going to get memo updating. Okay.
Yes.
Our next item is the Parks Master Plan Update and Award of Contract.
Sorry.
All right. Okay.
I'm just going to move to approve the award for the Parks Master Plan to Branstad or Carroll.
Okay, that was quick.
It's good.
Not that it matters. I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm here if there's any questions from anybody.
Okay, great. Thank you. Did I get this? I need a second, please. Second by Commissioner Tippett. Any further discussion? Not clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, item is adopted, and thanks everyone for the work on that.
Mayor, I have just one item related to this particular item that we just passed. As you well know, the project has a Steering Committee that will review and move with the project to its conclusion. And I would move that one of the members of that BCI Steering Committee be former Parks and Recreation Director Jim Parrish. I think he adds years and years of experience having been Parks Director for almost 30 years and would be a valuable asset to that Steering Committee.
I'm sorry, did I hear you? Did you put that in a form of motion? I apologize.
Yes, yes, I would move that. Jim Parrish be a part of the Steering Committee of Branstad or Carroll.
Question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Have we, have we, have we reached out to former Director Parrish to see if he's amenable to such an arrangement?
I have, and he's welcomed the idea.
Great idea.
A motion by Commissioner Sauer needs a second, please. Second by Commissioner Tippett. Any discussion?
Yes, I have. With this steering, with the Steering Committee, like, who chooses that and why all of a sudden is a name being brought before any other discussion or giving anyone else in the community a time to be able to be on the help with this Steering Committee? And I understand he was a longtime person. He won accolades while he was here, and it was great moving us in the right direction, things of that nature. I applaud his service. However, what are the stipulations? I guess that would go to the HR manager of, you know, bringing someone else in on a committee or things of that nature that has already been hired in other situations. And I think if we're going to open up the Steering Committee before we put someone on the Steering Committee, we need to know what those what those guidelines are to be on the committee and give everybody a reasonable chance to be on that Steering Committee before we just start naming people to be on a Steering Committee. That's just me.
Be glad to respond, Mayor. Our item for discussion, of course, is item number six that we were given, and it was quite lengthy and had the whole Branstad or Carroll approach to the master plan. And on page, let's see, page number four, it talks about the project's schedule as well as the Steering Committee. I'm just recommending one, one only person who also happened to sit on the committee that reviewed the RFPs and was also on the committee that reviewed the RFQs, Commissioner. And I just think that he would make a valuable employee. I don't know how many members are going to be on the Steering Committee. I'm sure there are other valuable members in addition to Mr. Parrish to be on there. But you can't beat someone with that kind of experience and knowledge. And having worked with Branstad or Carroll back in 2002 when the last master plan was implemented. And he was responsible as Parks and Recreation Director to implement each one of those plans listed. And that included the Aqua Center. Dolly Graham was one of them. Cove Springs was another one. Did a great job, and I just think he is one person that ought to be on the Steering Committee.
And, and I understand. Thank you for your clarity, and thank you for going back and reading what I clearly read in our minutes. But what I needed was what, who are we going to put on there? How are we going to put people on that Steering Committee? And yes, like I said, I applaud accolades. I'm glad he did what he did. However, you know what? Our, our community wasn't 110% approving of that. You know, some people wish that they had not backtrack on making our area, our pool area smaller than what it is right now. You know, there are some things that need to be pushed, and I'm not saying that his expertise or not, it would not be good here or there, but I'm sure there's other people also that would like to have that opportunity. And before we start putting people on a committee, I think that it needs to be out for our public to see what the criteria is and give everyone, if it's going to be four people, five, whatever that's going to be, and whatever we decide, that everyone needs to have a fair opportunity and not just put people because they've had experience working with someone or because they know someone. It's time to be fair across the board, and all I'm asking is for the criteria to be submitted, for the public to know what is there. And anyone that's willing or wants to be on this committee to have a chance to be on this committee before filling it. Usually, it's always filling it with officials or whatever, before filling it with people who have already been working on projects before. That's all I'm asking. I just want a fair chance for everyone and know the criteria.
Commissioner?
Mayor, may I speak to that? This is Sean, I'm sorry.
Mayor has left us for just a moment, apparently.
Go ahead, Sean. Sorry, you can have the floor.
That's okay. Just, just real brief, just considering the Steering Committee, that, that will be developed with the master plan. That's one of the first steps of the master plan. So BCI, Branstad or Carroll will work with us and put out that criteria that you're speaking about. And elected officials, city or park staff, members of the general public, there are opportunities for just about anybody. Now, there'll be some criteria that will be developed as the master plan starts. I don't want to speak exactly to that criteria yet, but there, there will be chances for for several people to be on the Steering Committee. So that, that is all part of the master plan that BCI will walk us through, and they'll walk us through starting that Steering Committee. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for that clarity, and that's exactly what I'm asking. And just furthermore, I just feel given the circumstance of COVID, you know, I feel like our decision-making is not so much resident or community-focused. It's becoming, let's use this emergency mode to try to hurry up and put some things through because we're not sitting in front of our committee, in front of our residents that can come and be present in these meetings and actually speak up. Their comments and things of that nature are being set aside. They're, you know, being scaffold through to say, oh, it doesn't exactly fit with this particular thing. So with that being said, I don't think that this is something that needs to be decided right now until the criteria is out. And I understand people have their own agendas. I am here to be the commissioner for the people and to be fair, and I think this is not right. And we, to me, we need to get back on the board of trying to get us back into normality as far as our meetings because too much is being done without our community to have a say. That's just my opinion.
Mayor, ma'am. Go to the floor. You're on mute, Mayor, I think. Commissioner Waldridge, I'll agree with you to a degree, you know. Obviously, the RFP that we've just awarded explains that Branstad or Carroll will come in and work with the commission initially to define the roles and the process and what we're envisioning. I envision this park plan as I have since we took office day one and I started talking about it to be an opportunity to really transform a segment of Frankfurt that we add amenities that our community has long wanted and been unable to get for for the processes we went through, lack of funding otherwise. But there is, if there's one scope of our city services that can be transformational, transformational to attract people to live in our town and to use our services and even raise some funds for us, it is through our Parks Department. You know, trash is a money-loss venture, no matter what we do. Most of our departments are that way. This is the opportunity to build something like we've been asked to do with turf and with a regional soccer tournament complex. So I don't want necessarily for the prejudices of the past to influence the, the value of the future, if I can say it that way. I want to be very strategic in the people that we appoint. I want to be fair in the people that we appoint to oversee this, this process, including those that we've already tasked with, with that task, with that role, the Parks Board, but others that represent distinct areas of interest within our Parks Department, be it organized sporting or an indoor facility with pools or trails and cycling or the museum and historic preservation and the other historic sites. We need to be very strategic in incorporating more people. I think we've done a fairly poor job in our, our year and a half in office into this term of, and partly because of some of the obstacles that we've faced, like COVID-19, to incorporate more of the community. We get a better result, the more people we include, and the more process that they go through to, to develop this. And I'm adamant that the Parks Plan is going to be very inclusive and is going to take into account not only what's been done in the past and those that are protecting their, their investment in our community, but what the, the child that is dreaming of of the future is going to want as well, which many have told me their desires for, for our town and things that we don't have currently that they would really like to see. So I think it's incumbent upon us to to really vet out who we want to make an agile body that can oversee this planning process. Of course, we could put 50 people and just start naming names right now, but I don't know that that will get us the best results. Let's be strategic and not that I don't thank Jim Parrish for what he's done for the community over the years, but I think it is premature to, to name someone from the community to that board when, when we have just approved a process and hired a consultant that will help us define those roles and those people better. Thank you. Mayor, I think you're on mute or delayed.
Can you hear? I can't hear the mayor.
Neither.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, we still can't hear.
With that said, there's still a motion on the floor?
We have a second? Yes, we did have a second.
Yes. Okay.
May I ask the city solicitor a question?
Yes, please.
I'm not opposed to Jim Parrish. You all can figure out how you want to do that committee, but can that be made when the agenda title was just Parks Master Plan Update? Can this be done in a special call meeting with that agenda title?
I don't think so.
Because I'm always the bearer of bad news, but I think you're right. Keith, City Manager, I think that it'd be best to just hold up until the next meeting, and we can make sure it's on the agenda properly.
How would we craft the agenda item, Madam Solicitor?
It would be if you all, I think first of all, we just need to look at the master plan, but then if you all have But then if you all have particular members that you want to serve on the selection committee, I think the agenda item could be a discussion of possible selection of Parks Master Plan Selection Committee members. It could be that simple.
And maybe we also, our next meeting today, Laura, that, um, that we all take into account um, our own skill sets and our interest in the Parks Department and come up with, with the criteria that we would like to establish at our work session next month, um, would be great. And Branstad or Carroll should be in contact with us by then to, um, discuss when and how we can meet, um, in these uncertain times, uh, to define those roles. And maybe they would have some recommendations for, um, positions that they've typically filled with the over fifty-eight other communities that they've developed park plans for.
I'll make a note for discussion at the work session. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Laura. I'll convince Keith next.
Uh, just, I was going to say I'd make a note if, if we want to take this up at the June work session.
Okay.
Mayor, I believe you're talking and we still can't hear you.
Yeah. Keith, did you have something to say?
Yeah.
Can, can Commissioner Waldrich act as Mayor Pro Tem if the mayor is visibly on the screen and I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, now it's better.
There you're coming in, Mayor. If you can turn it up, you're turning to, um.
There you are. There you are. We got you.
Do us the jingle bells.
Keith, did you have something to add? Yes, Keith was, Keith was getting ready to speak. Laura. Is Laura present? Laura, in this situation, instead of idling our, uh, meeting, how do we work that out? Uh, apparently Mr. Wisman had an issue with me going ahead and moving a productive meeting forward and getting the answers while the mayor's taking care of his, uh, things of, of that nature. If he, if we can't hear him but see him, he's not considered present. Or if we can hear him without seeing him, he is not considered present. Is he there?
Would it, would it help out, Laura, if I simply withdrew my motion and whoever seconded it withdraw their second and we move on?
That'd be great.
I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting crazy feedback, um, through this. Uh, yeah, I think, I think we have a couple of options here. We either recess or pause in some other fashion until the mayor can be both seen and heard, or we continue with the mayor pro tem presiding until the mayor can be seen and heard. Either way. It's up to you all. Oh, sorry, Mayor. I can't hear.
He could be seen and heard. Obviously, we're just having some difficulty. If we can have some patience here, it would behoove us all to conduct these. Obviously, this isn't ideal. Mayor, I motion that we take a two-minute recess to, uh, work out technical issues.
Second.
All right.
Hi.
Oh, nay.
All right, so back to number six, Parks Master Plan Update and Award of Contract. What is your pleasure?
Commissioner Sauer, were you rescinding formally? We didn't actually take that action.
We, we pass the award, right? And then there was discussion regarding Mr. Parish. And, uh, I was told I was out of order by the city attorney. So I reluctantly withdraw my motion to name him to the Select Committee instead of Carroll.
Okay.
Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett.
I seconded that motion. Do I, do I have to, do I have to withdraw it? I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a comment before I do. Is that in order?
Um, if you could withdraw your second first, and then I'll just call on you because we're still beyond Parks Master Plan.
Okay, I withdraw the second for Commissioner Sauer's original motion.
Thank you. And now, do you want to make comments?
I do. Uh, I think there's, there's one inescapable, uh, fact in this debate about the composition of this committee. Uh, Mr. Parish needs to be on it, and that is just, that's just a fact, okay? So however it is ordered or whatever the timeframe is, it needs to be done strategically. And he needs to be included on that committee. That's just my opinion.
Okay. All right, so, um, everybody's getting blurry on me here. Some of you all are blurry. All right. Next item is number seven, to allow Commissioner Waldrich to explain her vote on the Fort Hill Conservation Easement at, from the, uh, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty City Commission Meeting.
Yes, and well, first of all, I guess when I submitted it, I said that I wanted to resend, but when it hit the email that I wanted to resend, Mayor, you had came back and said that that was against, uh, Robertson, uh, Roberts Rules of Orders, um, which I'm surprised that, you know, you, you pulled Roberts Rules of Orders on this particular one, but.
Commissioner, for the record, I, I believe that was from our city attorney. The email was from our city attorney. Is that correct? Is that what you're referring to?
It was brought from your attention. My bad, it was brought into your attention. And.
I don't.
I'm sorry.
The, uh, email today from the city attorney?
I, I don't, I don't know if I sent an email. I do know that I did check Roberts Rules of Order, and that is, and I talked to Commissioner Waldrich to make sure she understood. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, um, and then I brought up a last time that I'd actually rescinded and wasn't an issue then on the Thoroughbred Parks, if you guys could remember, but we won't get into that. That's not on the agenda. What I do want to say is I want the record, uh, Ms. May, to know that I do not support, uh, the easement. Um, under the circumstances of the information that was received was not fully, uh, received, was not fully detailed and acreage, anything of that nature. Had I received everything in full, my vote definitely would have been totally different. Um, given that circumstances is that we are making a whole lot of decisions with not a whole lot of, uh, community being involved in these decisions and being able to have a say in these decisions. I think we're pushing a lot of things through. I'm not sure I'm being left out on a lot of conversations, uh, side conversations is what I'm gathering because I'm only getting bits and pieces. But what I can say is I want the record to show that my vote would have been differently given the appropriate and full disclosure of what the commission itself was trying to move forward. Um, leaving off acreage is huge. If you're talking about a piece of land, the acreage should be on there. I know I've spoken with the city manager and I've spoken with the commission. And as well as the community knows, my heart with the community on this, I do not want to do anything to Fort Hill that's going to keep us from ever coming back to, uh, put trails on that, bike trails up there. As I think other people, um, you know, in this situation, I know that there were a couple of comments that were sent in. I would like to use that as just some evidence and some proof that, you know, the community need to have a say. I know there was one comment that was posted, uh, on Facebook right now where people could definitely read and show. But I also would like to share that clearly there's support out there for this. Uh, Mark Harrell, which was a citizen here in Frankfurt, definitely made his, uh, announcement to just show that people need to have a say in these things. And he stated that I would like the commission, the city commission, to realize that the bike trails are better maintained than hiking trails, just like the quality of trails of Capital View Park from here to Coast Strings and Salado. The trails at Capital View are maintained by a dedicated team of mountain bikers who spends hours grooming trails or is safe to ride and walk. By using the surrounding land of Fort Hill for bike trails, this would also expand the use of hiking to create healthier Frankfurt and Franklin County residents. I completely understand preserving the history, historic value of Fort Hill, but there is also a lot of land that goes unused. This would be another resource of drawing people downtown after riding on Fort Hill for the day riders could visit.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, are you explaining your vote or are you reading something that was not part of your vote?
Oh, no, this is explaining why I'm changing my vote. Um, so I will continue. This is not the case with the current mountain bike trails, Capital View Park. It is simply not convenient. Using unhistoric land at Fort Hill would be draw or the people, the historic part of the hill to educate people from Franklin County or Frankfurt and beyond. And he asked the commission to reevaluate their stance on the use of the nonhistoric land surrounding Fort Hill and to give people another outlet for a healthy lifestyle. I read that one to support my reason on why if people are not given a hundred and ten percent uh, to make a correct vote, I should not be held to not be able to rescind my vote. Because if all the information had been given, I would have voted appropriately. As everyone on this call and everyone who's watching knows, I am not for making anything permanent in this town. As we saw issues, uh, that a hundred-year contract and things of that nature messes up things in our city. So what I'm saying is I want the record to show I am not allowed to send, resend my vote directly to show that my vote that was made at our last voting on the twenty-seventh was because I was not giving all information on clarity of that, and it was actually more than just the Fort Hill amount. In support of me not supporting Fort Hill, I just want people to understand that at this time, we have to be great commissioners and mayors in making decisions that affect our community and stop trying to use the emergency mount right now to push anything and everything through because no one wants to face the community or get their word out on it. The community has a right to vote. The community has a right to say so. And I understand people are shaking their heads, but there's things going on behind the scenes our community is not aware of, and we are pushing things through right now just like this to try to get it through. I do not support it. I want my vote to say that I do not support it. And I do not support this commission, this commission, to make anything permanent in Frankfurt until the next commission comes in.
All right, just for clarification, uh, Commissioner, people can't rescind a vote after the meeting is over. So that's, uh, you cannot send a vote. You can state your reasons why you would, uh, have voted no. I allowed that, but, um, just for the record.
I can't hear him.
On the day of meeting.
I, Mayor, are you there? I see your mouth.
I'm here.
Oh, please repeat. I'm sorry.
All right, everybody's audio can. Is there another problem?
Now I can hear you. I can hear you now. Can everyone else hear him? Please repeat, I'm sorry.
Y'all can hear?
I can hear.
All right. I keep getting, I mean, I've, I've had a green light the whole time I've been talking.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, the only time someone can rescind a vote would be during the day before the, the day of the meeting before that meeting is adjourned. So that's why a commission would not be allowed to rescind a vote, uh, on, on an issue that was, uh, made. So I allowed to, uh, go back and, uh, explain that vote, but I believe.
I appreciate that, and I clearly understand, and I did. And thanks to Laura for giving me a call to clarify Roberts Rules. I think what I did bring up was I did rescind a vote, uh, that was okay to you when it was okay to get Kentucky State involved. That rescind was okay, but it, when it came to the Fort Hill, it was an issue that we needed to pull on. But now that I'm familiar with Roberts Rules, I will make sure that moving forward, that we have all the information that we need and that certain people on our commission do not pull certain things as acreage and things of that nature from the information that should have been given.
I don't know of any vote that would have been allowed to be rescinded after, uh, the meeting, but maybe that's a different term. So we can always go back and check the record on that.
Uh, we definitely can. That would be the Thoroughbred Trail I voted for because, uh, of that issue. Could you look at that, Laura, or anyone else can pull it, uh, rescind it, my vote, re-vote it, and then it was approved.
Not Laura for the agenda item.
That's right. So we can check that. Uh, but just for the record, we do follow the rules. Go ahead, Commissioner, I mean, uh, Ms. Ross.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was writing something down, and I think Commissioner Wisman asked me a question. I apologize.
That's getting off topic.
Yeah, off topic for the item to be discussed.
Yeah. So, I want everybody to remember our rules procedure, please. Ask the city attorney or myself, we'd be happy to help. Now I'm getting a thing. Bobby, my computer says your computer needs to restart.
Three more agenda items. We could do it.
We can hear you, Mayor. We can hear you, Mayor.
Yeah, this is a brand new laptop. Um, it's, I'll just say restart later. See what happens. All right. Recycling program.
Mayor, if I may, um, several, several months back, well, for the last year, really, we've been discussing recycling options and having sort of a, um, a back and forth with, with our current provider in Lexington of what is allowed and what's not allowed. Um, and some months back, we asked staff to develop, um, an analysis, if you will, of options for us to present to us to make a determination. And I'd like to just ask staff, I talked to Mrs. Beadier earlier today, um, about this request to, um, to take the two options that are available in Lexington and Louisville and to bring us back for our work session in June. Um, a full analysis of those two options so that we can make a decision on, on permanently where we center recyclables or at least for the contractual future. Um, I believe after touring the facilities that there's an obvious, um, better option that allows us to enable our citizens to recycle a greater amount of items. And I just want the, um, the financial analysis for us to review as a body to make that decision. Um, so that we, we hopefully stop some of this, um, fluctuation in, um, whether you can recycle or not and what is and is not recyclable week to week. Um, it's been a difficult, uh, program nationwide, of course, right now. But I, I believe, uh, personally, as I presented to the commission many times, that there is a best option that we need to explore. And we have, uh, in past weeks been using that option that I think we need to make more of a, a permanent thing. And ideally relaunch our recycling program as an expanded program this summer, um, which would have been nice to have during this time period that everyone's at home producing so much more trash. So my request is just that, um, that staff create a, a financial analysis, comparison analysis, if you will, of the Louisville, um, Recycling Center and the Lexington Recycling Centers to bring back to us to review in our work session in June.
Second.
What's going on? Mike says, sorry, did you put that, you put that in form of a motion, Commissioner?
Did I nod? Sorry. I'm asking a motion. Is that sufficient?
Absolutely. And I got, heard a second from Commissioner Sauer. Correct? Correct. Okay. All right, any discussion? Let CNN Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Waldrich?
Yes.
Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, that ends adopted. Next would be number nine. Uh, yes, that ends adopted. Next would be number nine, Dolly Graham Park.
Mayor. You get me, Mayor? Yeah, I, I would just like, uh, Sean, if he would, uh, to give us a, a brief, a brief update and maybe Rebecca can chime in too as to where we are, uh, in the process of Dolly Graham. I, I, I'm, I'm sure the, uh, the pandemic has caused a major snafu, but I, I'd really would like to know where the, where in the process we are and an update would be greatly appreciated.
Um, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, we have been working with Department for Local Government and the National Park Service to finish up all the environmental information. Um, we talked in the middle of April with DLG, the, the last form that they, that the park service needed was a field inspection of the park. Um, Sean and I both offered to go do that. They, they preferred to have their field personnel do that. However, um, they did contact us last Friday and said that they were unable to get field representatives out there. So they asked us to complete the film. We did that this weekend and turned it in at 10 o'clock this morning. So they have every document that they need at this point. So we'll keep you informed as soon as we hear from them.
Yes, and one question for Sean, Mayor, if I may.
You may go ahead.
Uh, Sean, did you indicate that the first thing we would do would be raise the old shelter? That would be the first, very first initial step. Is that correct?
No, the, the first initial step will be to take out the old playground and replace the. Yeah.
Okay.
And several commission meetings ago before COVID hit, you guys approved the plan for the new playground to go in, so.
Great, great.
Yeah, so as soon as, as soon as we get the go-ahead from DLG and the National Park Service, then we will immediately, I've been in contact with Katie and Mr. Gibson from Public Works. And, uh, they, they're on the radar and, and as soon as we get the go-ahead, we will start demo work at Dolly Graham. And I mean, I, their public works is probably a little bit behind like everybody else because of this. But as soon as humanly possible, we will start work on Dolly Graham. It's parks management, Dolly Graham and Capital View are top priority projects.
Right, and you know, uh, it, this is, I, I'm just going to add to our last just a little bit. Uh, this project is such a major victory for the community. It, it's, uh, it's been needed for years and, uh, I, I appreciate all of my colleagues and the city manager and the mayor, uh, for sort of, for sort of, uh, suffering with me, suffering me while I, uh, try to, uh, facilitate this project. But I think we all know and we all agree that it is, it is certainly most worthy. And Sean and Rebecca, thank you for, uh, suffering through this commissioners', uh, anxieties. Uh, so thanks and, uh, great job, guys.
Mayor.
Mayor, for a clarification.
Um, Commissioner Sauer, because I'm, sorry. Let me let commit, because I was gonna, uh, you can't hear, but I was, I was pointing at Commissioner Sauer, so, and then, then Commissioner Wisman, so sorry.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm gonna later.
Mayor, I, I, let me address this to Sean. As I understand it, Sean, uh, there are, uh, well, actually five primary items regarding Dolly Graham. The playground indeed is one and an important part. The splash pad is another. The new renovation of the shelter with restrooms is part of phase two of the park, as well as the dog park, uh, and the renovation of the basketball tennis courts, um, multi-sport. Is that right, Sean?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me, uh, let me say then, um, I'm sure this commission remembers fondly Charlie Tippett, who, who was recognized for coaching Little League baseball in our parks for over twenty-plus years. We recognize him with a proclamation of Charlie Tippett Day last year. For his involvement throughout our city, I would move that we name the playground area at Dolly Graham Park, Charlie Tippett Playground Park, and I would entertain a second to my motion.
I'll second that, Commissioner Sauer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wisman. I was gonna say, and I would second it as well, too. Yes, I would say to, uh, you lost me again?
Yes. Just your audio. It was garbled.
Everything good?
Now you're fine.
Making sure the power's on. Everything looks good. Uh, yeah, Charlie Tippett was a special, uh, person in our community. It was monitored to recognize him, uh, a few months ago with the proclamation. Everything that we said in that was heartfelt and he's helped a lot of children, a lot of people in this community, and I think it's well deserved, so, um, I won't belabor that, but, uh, any other members wish to be recognized or are you ready to vote?
Call for a question, Mayor.
Um, the motion is that we're we are just naming the playground areas. That, that was the motion, just the play, the new playground area, not the.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
We would not, uh, change the name Dolly Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
I said yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Oh.
I'm gonna recuse, I'm gonna recuse myself in this vote, uh, if I may, Mayor, I think I'm meant to explain it.
You may, go ahead.
Yeah, um, wow. Uh, I know he's, he was my dad, okay, uh, but wow. Uh, I can't think of anybody more deserving of the honor. He worked so hard with, uh, the youth of South Frankfurt. Uh, many of you are aware of his, uh, church ministry and his work with Little League parks and kids and uh, so I, I'm, I'm more than grateful, uh, for the honor from my dad. Thank you.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer? Mr. Sauer? Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, and even though Commissioner Sauer made the motion, I would like to, and this is a procedural thing, I would just like to, for the record, I would like to be listed also as a, um, made a motion, because I mean, I would like to say that I, I agree with, I don't know how to list that as a co-sponsor, but.
That's foul of the name, Mayor.
I just want to have those in the record, although Commissioner Sauer made the official, I'm just saying, if anybody else wants. He's a special person. All right, thank you, and, uh, congratulations to the Tippett family on, on that honor.
Mayor May?
Sir, what was that?
Yes, I just wanted to add in with Dolly Graham Park, uh, on top of what Commissioner Tippett was sharing is that, you know, I think all of us, it's probably near and dear to our hearts to make sure this does go forward exponentially. And I, you know, we've already approved the funding and things of that nature, and I know COVID may change some things, but this is one thing that COVID should not change. We continue on this path exponentially and make this happen. And there should be nothing ever come back about funding or anything or us holding up anything. This needs to get done like yesterday. So I just support that moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Wisman, go ahead.
Um, I just had a clarification. I got a call that was, um, a little disturbed. Um, the, and maybe Rebecca and Sean can, can verify. Um, you know, the Department of Local Governments had approved this project fully. And really, the only hold-up to my understanding was, uh, at the federal level in some, some filing forms and then final approval of the grant. So this is nothing, um, to my understanding, on a local level or even the state level. We are truly just waiting for federal response, which has been delayed inevitably. And unfortunately, there's, there's really almost nothing that we can influence. Um, so it's just a bit of a waiting game. I just want the community to understand that, um, that state has approved our project and awarded our grant. And, um, there's, there's no hold-up at Department of Local Government whatsoever. They've been fantastic to support our community. Um, but, but I've had several questions about when that park is going to be installed and have explained that, um, we, we are unable to spend even a single dollar, um, in, towards the construction of the park until we have the federal award, which thankfully Rebecca has told us that, um, we will go file the final, the puzzle, and hopefully we'll have those funds awarded to get underway on that project expeditiously.
Okay, good points. All right, next item, number 10.
Mayor, can I move, we just pass over this? I think we need some more information. I have a number of questions. I move that we pass over the item.
Second.
Made a motion, pass over, and Commissioner Sauer made a second, correct. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Oh, City Manager.
Um, it's fine passing over this. Um, I would like to talk about, uh, uh, the agenda setting process and, and the items that were added tonight by the commission and, uh, the lack of clarification that commission added to those items when they were placed on the agenda and the repeated attempts by myself to gain more information on what might be discussed so staff could be prepared. This is, uh, two meetings in a row, we've been surprised by action taken by this commission. And, uh, I'd hate to say that was on purpose, but, uh, I think if, if we're gonna have a, if we're all gonna be prepared for this process, I think, uh, I think we need to provide you all attachments and you all need to provide us attachments.
Yes, Mayor.
Here, okay. I don't know that that's actually an item that we can discuss. A procedural item.
We can discuss procedural items as long as we don't get into substance. That would, that would have applied to the, uh, to Commissioner Waldrige's actual, uh, issue with asking about the votes as well.
Okay. Okay.
So all I ask is there maybe be, uh, some kind of idea for staff so we can prepare on the commission-added items. Uh, I'm fine passing over the parking services RFP and it was appropriate labeled, uh, a discussion to see if you all were interested in moving forward, uh, considering, uh, where, where we're at now and spending money. And it's perfectly, uh, okay for y'all to pass over on spending more money on the parking services RFP.
All right, um, Commissioner Waldrige, you wish to be recognized?
Yes, I just wanted to add on, um, Mr. Parker. I, you know, I just, uh, I don't know what's going on and what's being passed and what you just brought up as far as the agenda items. Um, I'm not in, I'm not privy to those conversations. Like I've said, I've been left out. But one thing that I was a little disturbed on and Laura, I'm not sure how vague it has to be, but in my agenda item was taken off and I never received written, um, I never received three written, um, emails or anything from three commissioners that wanted my, um, agenda item that was taken off in regards to, um, dollar for dollar, uh, helping our commit, helping our residents out and our businesses out with maybe a voucher system with our local businesses, and that was taken off. So if that didn't become, if I didn't receive three from three different commissioners in written, because that's what the rules say, that it needs to come written on why, so I can explain why I want something put on the agenda. Why was it taking it off so breastly? And then this agenda sent out when I received no information or was never given a time to explain why I wanted it on the agenda.
Mayor.
Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross, go ahead.
Um, sure, if, if I can address that, that's, that's probably, and this is, this is procedural. Um, and, and I think it's relevant as we were dealing with these virtual meetings. Um, I did actually take a look at the rules. We do have a meeting order on the books that says when an item is going to be removed from an agenda, it requires a majority of the board of commissioners to voice that desire to remove in writing. Um, that is for, it does say specifically in our meeting order that that refers to regular meetings, voting meetings or work sessions. We are in strange times right now with this, uh, virtual format where this is truly our regular meeting, but it's set up as a special meeting format. And we're seeing some of the issues here tonight quite clearly procedurally, um, from, from trying to deal with this difficulty. So we don't have anything on the books for, for, um, the explanation or, or the written confirmation of taking it off when it's this type of situation. But I am actually, just for you all, gonna send something out so that we can discuss that and decide how we want to handle it going forward.
Okay. Um, next item, last item is, do we need the executive session?
I'll read it. Mayor, that move that we go into executive session per KRS 61 dot eight 10, subsection one, subsection B, deliberations on future acquisition of real property related to downtown development and blight elimination with publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wisman, second by Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? CNN, uh, I'm gonna let the clerk call the roll since it's just easier with this type of meeting, please.
Mr. Walbridge?
Yes.
Shemay, I think we lost your audio.
Yes, yes. Yes. Yes, yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor, you're on a bit of a delay.
Mayor May?
Hey, hello, yes. Yola, Shemay's on a delay, too. I'm losing Shemay. Motion passes.